Evening, and for individuals who are online, I believe Mr. SASS is joining us via his virtual option to be online, so he may be online already, or he may be joining us online shortly. It's great to have Ms. Honeycutt back with us tonight, so we're ready to begin our committee meetings. The first committee is our Special Housing Committee. Mr. Wareman is the chair.
Thank you, Chairman Middleton. Again, so I chair the Special Housing Committee for Charleston County. Other members of the committee are Councilman Darby, Councilman Kowalski, Councilman SASS, and then Chairman Middleton sits on all committees. The first item on the agenda, as always, is approval of the minutes. We've got approval of the minutes of April 24th. Moved for approval?
Moving.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None are opposed, so the minutes are approved. Our main item on the agenda here is we're going to get a Housing Our Future Plan update. Various ensundry programs, I think we're going to have presentations from a number of different folks working on different aspects of that plan, the first of which is going to be Mr. Davis, so I will turn it over to you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Wareman, members of the committee and council, appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the Housing Our Future Plan. Just as a reminder, the Housing Our Future Plan was adopted by-
You all back in May of 2023. It is a plan for the whole county, not just the unincorporated portion, municipal portions as well. And that plan has five broad goals with 27 strategies, and you all have prioritized seven of those strategies to date. We're still working on the other one as opportunities arise, but those are the ones that have our focus right now. Today, we're going to talk to you about four of those. First of those being explore using TIF and tax abatement to support affordable and moderate income housing. That one is squarely in my court as the Housing Development Director. Other strategies are not necessarily in my court, but it is my job to coordinate, to see that those are being moved through the process, and to work with our partners on those. With 27 strategies, we do need a lot of partners, both public and private sector. So, the next strategy, utilize and bank land to support affordable and mixed income housing development. You're going to hear from F.A. Johnson II, from Charleston Redevelopment Corporation, our partner with that program. Fourth strategy, establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support priority activities. We're pleased to have Nate Barber, CEO of South Carolina Community Loan Fund, provide you an update on that. And then the fourth one, collaborate with regional partners to align zoning and other land use regulations. That one's an internal partner. You'll hear from our Planning Director, Joel Evans. So first, I'll give you a report on tax abatement. As I'm sure you recall, you approved the Uniform Tax Exemption Policy just a little over a year ago, and I wanted to remind everyone of that policy very briefly. There is a standard incentive program with minimum thresholds for percentage of affordable units, as well as AMI limits. We are doing extensive cost benefit analyses with our consultant to ensure that but for the incentive, the project would not happen, or happen in the manner that we want to see it, with affordable units set aside, as well as a procedure in place to ensure no undue enrichment of the developer. Mixed-use residential and potentially other projects that will further the objectives of the plan are eligible. We have mechanisms for transfers, as well as mechanisms to address deviations from the standard incentives. And I'll tell you, the applications we've received so far are all very different from each other. We have clawback provisions to make sure our investment's protected should they not meet their investment or their AMI targets. And of course, you all have the final say in any approval, and only projects consistent with the plan are eligible. So progress on tax abatement to date. We established procedures, application documents, and our online application portal. We are finalizing ordinances, agreements, et cetera, that address a range of different scenarios. And I think the county attorney would agree with me, that has been a little more arduous process than we anticipated. But at the same time, we are still accepting applications. So, as my DCA Christine Durant likes to say, we're building the plane as we fly it, but it is very close to being fully built. To date, we've received five notices of intent. Four applications are in various stage of process, and one application has been stalled, nothing to do with the tax abatement, just the project in general. So I would ask that you anticipate to see some projects coming your way very soon, and once we have the final loose ends tied up on all of our documents and everything, we are going to push even harder to reach out to developers and make them aware of this So the next strategy is utilize and bank land to support affordable and mixed income housing development, and I'm pleased that you'll hear from F.A. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of County Council, good afternoon. As indicated, I'm F.A. Johnson II, the CEO of Charleston Redevelopment Corporation, and as we talk about the Affordable Housing Landback Acquisition Program, I want to take 30 seconds and just give a quick highlight, because we have not had a chance to formally have a conversation with and about the CRC. The Charleston Redevelopment Corporation has been spent 10 years working on either financing or developing affordable housing. We've assisted over 100 households in the last five years and have 143 units right now either under construction, in permitting, or in pre-development. And we've been able to retain 84 units as deeply affordable as a part of the Palmetto Community Land Trust. And so in the last 24 and 25, we've closed about 13 townhouses as well. And most importantly, I guess, and also relevant to our conversation this evening, in June of this year, we were pleased by Treasury to be designated as a CDFI. And so that certainly is an accomplishment, as we've been implementing three loan programs, and this is one of those. The other two are the Common Cause Loan Program, as well as the City of Charleston's Bond Program. But zeroing in specifically on our progress to date with this program, you charged us with a little over $2.5 billion, including some administrative fees. We have closed three transactions totaling $900,000, and we have another $835,000 that are pending for closing right now. You'll see that there's a combination of both homeownership and rental projects. You also see that there's a diversity of types of projects. We have done apartment complexes, we have done townhouses, and we've done single-family detached. So we've covered both homeownership rental, as well as various product types, and then geographic diversity throughout the county. Having done projects in North Charleston, we have a groundbreaking scheduled in Mount Pleasant for next week, and certainly doing some in the county. So certainly pleased with the progress so far in terms of deployment of capital. I do want to highlight a few moments in the process. You know, the goal is, from a standpoint of those funds from acquisition, is leverage. I can't say that I need to do the math on the total leverage, and I will get that reported back out to you, but we have done fairly substantial leveraging across the board, particularly when you start talking about some of the multifamily projects that have garnered some of the media attention. And I wanted to just show you as well, on the right bottom, you have some photographs that show one project at the point of closing on Ashley Falls Street Road, 32 units that we used as part of the preservation. They've since gone through and completed the parking lot resurfacing, looking at redoing the trash enclosures and making a lot of aesthetics. But I think what's really important from affordability standpoint is, some of the other improvements are designed to assist the residents in terms of windows replacements to keep utility costs down, and HVAC improvements. So really passing those savings on to the end user, or in this case, the renters. You most recently approved the second round of funding, which is supporting two infill development projects. The one on the left represents 23 units for the Town of Ravenel, which again are targeted 80% AMI. And that's the other thing I failed to mention, from a diversity standpoint of 80% AMI all the way up to 120%, we're hitting the full spectrum of affordability. And then you have on the right, Palmetto Community Actions, infill of eight units of townhouse projects. So just giving you a little bit of a flavor of the types of project that we have. I've already discussed the leveraging. Certainly, we've had substantial media coverage on the various aspects of as we've launched, and you all have made various approvals. I also made reference to the fact that we do have groundbreaking ceremony on the 16th coming forward. We are now in the phase of working and sitting down and meeting with the individual borrowers to talk about compliance monitoring, what files they need to submit as part of their process with their end sellers and end renters, and we still continue to receive applications. The application portal remains open. We receive inquiries on a regular basis, and so I fully expect to come back to you all with additional recommendations that would most likely deplete the balance of the $765,000 that is awarded to us from that standpoint. But I certainly welcome the opportunity to entertain any questions from you, and I appreciate the opportunity to come to you and give you an update.
Mr. Johnson, I do want to pause here as we go through each sort of section and just take any questions or comments as they come, rather than wait. And I don't have much, certainly appreciative of all the work you've done. I think that, you know, we've got the land banking, we've got, obviously, the trust fund that was sort of discussed a little earlier. It'd be a little bit, well, maybe this is more of a question for Mr. Davis, but whoever can answer, I mean, what are sort of some of the distinctions? Obviously, I know where the subsidy comes from is the main distinction, but are we seeing, you know, differences in return, differences in areas we can focus on? What have sort of been, if you could, your thoughts on the comparison of those results?
Is this specific to tax abatement?
No. Actually, let me wait on that one. That'll come at the end. Because we haven't gotten to, I guess, the trust fund yet. Very good. Well, I certainly, I don't think I have any questions, though, Mr. Johnson, but again, I appreciate all the work you've done, getting some success, and I was happy to see some of those units coming online and the improvements being made to them that we went out and visited there a few months back. Any other questions from Mr. Boykin?
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the funding that went to Sea Island Habitat Humanity, is that for the 50-home project they're working at Back Pen Road, or were those other projects?
It's four units, that they've torn down a former- yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Johnson, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next up, you're going to hear from the South Carolina Community Loan Fund about the Housing Our Future Trust Fund. I've got their CEO, Mr. Nate Barber.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Nate Barber. I'm the CEO of the South Carolina Community Loan Fund. Since the name is long, I'll refer to it as the Loan Fund from here on out. By the way, we just celebrated our 20-year anniversary back in June. We started here, right here in Charleston, 20 years ago, and been a pleasure working with the county folk on this particular project. But on behalf of our Board of Directors and the rest of the Community Loan Fund team, I only have with me today my President Deborah McKetti. We certainly want to express our gratitude for the confidence that you've shown in the Loan Fund by working with us on this particular project. There are actually two that we've been working with you on, on the county, on one is the gap funding, but tonight we're talking about the Housing Trust Fund. I just wanted to point out that we had great working relationship with members of the county staff, in particular, I just wanted to call out Eric Davis and Christine Durant, and on my side, Deborah McKetti and our Chief Lending Officer, Brian Colka, who have been very big behind it, and then I'm to press down. Okay, this is good. So what we've been doing since the kickoff of the program is doing an awful lot of promoting the program around the county. This is what we've seen thus far. When we had the initial kickoff, soft lunch, we had 53 applications that came through, but some of these were not viable applications. Some were just people that were trying to build individual homes that did not qualify for this program. So what we've had to do is to go back through, and we have a person, Greg Perry, who actually monitors this, and would go back and work with anyone who starts the application process. So you can see where we currently are, different stages in the process. So there are 37 applicants that are in progress at this point. We are in the pre-application stage for one, but we go in and we monitor, and then we tell people what they need to do to move on to the next level. What we're doing is trying to maintain an active pipeline. That's why we're doing all of this outreach into the community, but have an active pipeline of projects that are coming our way. We're actually working with Mr. Johnson's company on some of the projects, so that we're hopeful that we'll have all that, so we'll continue the support with applicants that come in. If the applicants are not complete, we're telling them the kinds of things they need to do to move on to the next step. We will be tracking the outcome of where the projects are and the income level of those that are in there. In turn, up to our organization, we have a program called Salesforce that will be helping us to keep track of all of that. We have to report it for other purposes anyway, so it's not a huge extra step to be able to do this, but we'll be able to tell in which county council district, or the income portions of it, or the income descriptions of it, so we'll be tracking all of that type of data and be able to report back to you on a quarterly basis as to what it is that we're seeing. This is the pipeline that we have right now. There are, let me, I had to sum it up, but we have 3.4 million in applications from the Housing Our Future Trust Fund. Total pipeline, 140, I should have that, 147 projects with a total market value of $47 million that's out there right now that we're working on. Just want to point out one final thing is that we do have the Board, the Housing Our Trust Fund Board, which consists of Christine Durant, Eric is also on that, Jenny Stroud, who is our Vice Chair, but also used to work with the City of Charleston and their Housing Department, Greg Foodak, who is a local banker here, and also Jennifer Arado. Both of these people are also either a board member for our organization or on one of our loan committees. So those are the kinds of things that we have. So just to give you a quick update, we've had the soft lunch back in May. We received lots of different calls, as I mentioned, tire kickers, as we saw. We launched a website, and there's a act to the, I'm sorry about that. We launched the website describing the program, and it is able, they're able for the applicants to apply online. They have to apply through the Community Loan Fund's website, that'll get them to the website where they can actually do the application for the project. So that's what we're doing with the project, and I think that question was kind of directed more toward us, the kind of question.
Well, we'll take that up in a minute. I want to see if anyone else has any questions first. Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other questions or comments from any other members of council, whether you're on the committee or not? Very good. Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Barber. I do have a couple of things I wanted to ask, and I guess, you know, this goes to the idea that, I think, all the way back to our Housing Our Future Plan, we wanted to sort of keep in mind that there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, single solution to everything. And so I'm just kind of trying to map, good gosh, where we're, you know, tell me if you disagree, or Mr. Davis told me you disagreed, Mr. Johnson told me you disagreed, but it seems like we start creating these programs, and there does seem to be sort of a sweet spot of like a type of project, or, you know, be at home, anyhow, there seems to be this type of project, or maybe AMI level, or structure, that some programs are really good at doing, and others maybe aren't so much. And so I just want to, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of what are sort of the types of projects we think we're getting, either from the pipeline, or that you could foresee in the future, so that I can have, and this council can have some idea of, you know, if we're doing really well with 70-unit multifamilies, that I would be interested in what that AMI range looks like. But if, say, it's 80-ish unit multifamilies at 60 AMI, that would be good to know, so that we know, you know, that's really where we should be focusing our attention, if that's what we feel like we need in the county, versus, you know, 120 AMI, 20-unit programs, which seem a little bit maybe more like Mr. Johnson's program was doing that sort of size and scope and scale. So, or 80 to 120, I'm sorry. So, you know, I guess I'm just trying to get a landscape, and I know it's a difficult task, but to get an understanding of the landscape of where we think the puzzle pieces sort of fall with the alphabet soup of programs we're, I think, trying to cultivate.
Yeah, well, our organization would focus on that 80 to 120 AMI anyway, so this is just another avenue for us to help out in that area. There are two programs that we're involved with, with the county. One is a gap financing program for low-tech projects, which requires a larger dollar amount and a longer term. Those were a decision by the county, not by us. The Housing Our Future Trust Fund, those are decisions by us, by the committee that we have. And part of what we're dealing with here is that it's targeted for workforce housing, but we're dealing with applications that come our way. And the directions that we are under is that we want this money to revolve, so it can't stay out long. So we'll be looking at about five-year terms on loans, which would then mean that there are certain projects that need longer-term money that just won't qualify for. So that's going to be what's driving some of what happens in this project, is who's looking for monies to make a given project work. But we want that money to revolve, so it'll be outstanding, which you mean it could be used for pre-development, for some of the initial construction work, but it can't be out there any longer than five years, because we wanted to come back in again. Now, I actually don't have a size. Do you have a project size that you could help the councilmen with?
I don't know that there's necessarily a sweet spot to point to at this point. I would just say, if you do look back to the plan, it called for units all across the affordability spectrum, which I think we're doing a pretty good job of hitting those. I can tell you some of the tax incentive deals we're working on have deeper affordability than 80%. So some of those will hopefully be coming your way soon. Beyond that, I think we're serving, you know, we're doing rehabilitation projects, new construction, infill, larger multifamily. I think, at least at this point, we're getting a pretty good spread of different types of projects.
Especially after word gets out, the more promotion we're doing, we're going to different places to let developers know that this money is out there. I had a conversation yesterday with a developer in Columbia, who's coming down here to work on a project. So the word is getting out, so it's really going to be market-driven, but still focused on that 80 to 120 AMI number.
Okay, yeah, so I think that, I think that helps answer my question, which is, you know, I think we need to do, I agree, we need to be doing things at all sort of areas of the market and levels of AMI, and so I'm just sort of wondering which buttons hit which parts of the market, to the extent we can identify that, so I appreciate it.
I would add to that, and you may be, may agree with me, but, you know, with the directive for these to be short-term loans for the Housing Our Trust Fund, we haven't quite found a way to make that work for homeownership yet, but we are, we are still thinking hard about that. Just the structure doesn't really lend itself to homeownership in its current state. We're certainly going to track all of this, see where the gaps might be in the programs we have. Most of these are still under a year old, so I anticipate coming back to you with a report, at kind of a one-year report on what we've done, and maybe some areas where we need to step up our game.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, and I think that, you know, as we move along, if there's, you know, changes we need to make to enable different things that are being sort of inhibited by parts of the program, we can try and do that, or look at doing that. So again, I appreciate, appreciate everything y'all are doing, and excited for the pipeline to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Wareman. Just a note of thanks, I would say first, Mr. Johnson, thank for being here. Most of you may not know that Mr. Barber and Ms. McKetti, she may get mad at me for calling her name, are set to retire at the end of this year. And they've taught me a lot, and I know they've worked with Ms. Durant a lot, too. And like any good leaders, they've built an organization that should last them and should continue to thrive, and so for that, I'm thankful, but we'll certainly miss your presence and your partnership. And here they are, less than two months from hanging it up, and they're running through the finish line. So thank you both for your partnership with the county, and thank you for your friendship and your coaching.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you again. All right, the last strategy we wanted to give you an update on today is with an internal partner, our Planning Director, Joel Evans, is going to talk to you a little bit, give you some updates on collaborating with regional partners to align zoning and other land use regulations.
Thanks, Eric. So, yeah, just briefly, just as a reminder, as you all know, the Planning and Zoning Department works well with the other Planning and Zoning Departments, with the other municipalities. I'll go through what I call what we know as the Big Three, North Charleston, City of Charleston, and Town of Mount Pleasant, and then I'll cap off with what Charleston County is currently working on, besides what we've already adopted. So recently, North Charleston has amended their ordinance to allow by right accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in all of their residential zoning districts. They allow unlimited density and unlimited height in some areas along Rivers Avenue for affordable housing. No one has utilized that yet, taken advantage of it. That is a sort of a recurring theme, it seems like, when we try to adopt incentives, the market's just not telling the developers to do it yet. Recently, more importantly, recently, the city has hired a consultant to do a complete rewrite of their ordinance, and part of, it will be a two-year process. We've been assured by the city staff, North Charleston staff, that the county staff will be stakeholders and participate during that process, in which we can talk about affordable housing. I'm sure that will be a big topic with their consultant. So that's what's going on there. We're going to also be looking at creating corridors and overlays with the city of North Charleston, where it makes sense, and particularly, of course, where we have Charleston County jurisdiction properties in those corridors. City of North Charleston, they have created a strategy for 3,500 affordable housing units by 2032, which would equate to about 500 homes per year. Most of those are slated to be on the peninsula. Similar to the city of North Charleston, the city of Charleston is undergoing an ordinance rewrite as well. I'm actually on that steering committee for their ordinance rewrite. They put it on pause for a short while, but they've picked back up, and by the end of next year, that ordinance should be adopted. They're looking at some ordinance changes as well, looking at allowing more accessory dwelling units in some of their zoning districts, and clean up some of their PUD ordinance requirements to have an aspect of affordable housing in their PUDs. So that's the city of Charleston, and so those are two processes that the North Charleston and the city of Charleston are undergoing, that are kind of big deals with their ordinance rewrites, that we will be participating in, and will have an opportunity to input and assist wherever we're needed in identifying areas for affordable housing with them. The Town of Mount Pleasant, they are having some challenges with political will, I understand, on getting some ordinances, I hope I said that delicately, getting some ordinances passed, but of course, the city staff recognizes it. All planners in jurisdictions like ours recognize the need for it, so we'll continue to work with the town staff on that. As far as the Charleston County, as you know, we have our general affordable housing density incentives that are in our ordinance, and doesn't get utilized as often as we'd like, so we will look at that, and we'll try to learn something, maybe from these consultants that the city of North Charleston and the city of Charleston have hired during those We are having a workshop in November at the Planning Commission to look at drafting new alternative housing types, with an emphasis on the architecture and how that may fit into existing neighborhoods. So that may be something that will be coming out of the Planning Commission, that this body will have the opportunity to consider. We're just at the beginning stages of this. We're trying to look at this differently, rather than just adding the number, adding the units in this alternative housing type, but really focus on, like I said, the architecture and its presentation to the neighborhood, so that it fits in if something is adopted. That's it.
Mr. Pryor.
So, Mr. Evans, going back to North Charleston, you said unlimited height?
That's my understanding in my discussions with the city of North Charleston staff.
Twelve, 13 stories, 14 stories?
In certain areas. I think it was a certain area on Long Rivers Avenue, from my understanding, yeah.
Very interesting. And you also said about multifamily dwellings in the residential area?
Well, accessory dwelling units, not multifamily.
Okay, okay, so not duplexes and-
No, just adding another-
Adding another house in the back.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay. Oh, man, I'd like to know some more about that unlimited height.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Moody, and then Mr. Kibrowski, I believe.
You mentioned the Town of Mount Pleasant, political pressures, what does that mean? They want everybody else to do it, and they don't want to be a part of it?
No, I just, I think that the staff has presented some things during their ordinance rewrite, that were not accepted by the council at the time that they...
Everybody else to do it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kibrowski, and then we'll come both back to Mr. Pryor.
You know, personal insults about geographic areas gets us anywhere, so I would ask members not to be insulting the areas where people live, and pick, you know, whatever their agenda is, to keep it civil, and to keep it, we're all working together. In Mount Pleasant, we went from like 10,000 people to 100,000 people, there's just no room. What are some of the ordinances being discussed, in your opinion? Well, you heard, you mentioned different ordinances that are being discussed, I think, in Mount Pleasant, what are the, some of the...
Oh, I don't know the specific, I think there was a, what do they, a patio home layout at one point, they had some incentives, I think, similar to the counties and to other jurisdictions, that just did not get traction. And that's part of the process, that happens.
Thank you. Mr. Pryor.
So, Joe, those, so those could probably be apartments, when they said unlimited, if they're going to try to do affordable housing, I would guess, right?
I would think it would be multifamily, if you were going to do a tall...
Yeah, you would be tall, probably be apartments versus homes, yeah, because you can't build a home that high.
No.
Yeah, so...
I would assume, I would assume that that would be multifamily.
Yeah, because I see...
Apartments.
On Rivers Avenue, close to DuRey, now, and they're building some big apartment complexes, and they got a parking garage that's already just about completed. So I guess that's what they're going to be doing, and that's why the lead building is important there. Now it makes sense.
Very good. Anyone else? I do have a question, Mr. Evans. You mentioned our incentives not being utilized very much. Has anyone used those yet? I mean, I think we passed them the first year or so, when I was on council, so...
There have been a couple of folks that have used it.
All right.
Mostly Habitat for Humanity.
Fair enough.
The organizations that are...
Okay, well, I just, I, that's...
Not on a large scale.
That's understandable, and listen, you know, I've made this statement before, that this is Charleston County, so our zoning authority is over unincorporated area, which is largely going to be rural. So, you know, our housing, our future plan, I would remind everyone, talks about the need for more units, but I do think that very likely those units, where you're talking about increasing density, that's not going to be in Charleston, by and large, there are obviously pockets in areas, but that's largely not going to be the focus, I don't think, of Charleston County zoning changes, because then you're, then you're talking about increasing density in places that are furthest away from the jobs, furthest away from transit. Obviously, there are donor holes, there are areas where we'll have some opportunities, I think, to do our part on that, but, but I think by and large, I'm encouraged to hear that the efforts are well underway, at least in North Charleston and Charleston, for those, because I think when it comes to zoning reform, they are going to be frankly, the sort of front line on that, so. Anyone else?
Well, no.
Okay, Mr. Pryor, and then we'll close it out.
Thank you. Last fact, I took Mr. Darby on a tour of North Charleston and Union Heights, and Acabey to show him what density looks like, and he was shocked. I mean, these houses, they're building them so close together, you can reach your hand out the window and shake your neighbor's hand, so I'm hoping that they have some type of regulation to make them fire retardant, because if this house catches on fire, it's going to be a chain. And I mean this from Abutus Avenue all the way on down to Little, well, Kingsworth, not Little. So, I don't, I mean, they rely on the density to allow more units, but they're going to be where there's no parking, it's got to be on-street parking, that's on them, but I think Mr. Werman made a claim, that won't happen in Charleston County. But if anybody's interested, just go take a look, you know, from Abutus to Little, and then go to Acabey and see how they're putting these houses so close, going up, all in the name of affordable housing, but they're starting at $465,000. And, you know, so anybody that lives in that area won't be able to afford it, and the folks that live in there now are going to be taxed out in the name of affordable housing. So, if anybody wants to see, I'd be glad to ride with them one day, but Mr. Darby, you can comment if you want to, because I think he was shocked, but I showed it to him.
I'm going to leave it open for Mr. Kibrowski, who's waving at me. I do think we need to wrap it up, the gentleman.
I was just saying, I'd like to go on one of the rides with you.
I'd be glad to, when you get to it.
All right, well, I'm going to let y'all coordinate that offline, and I think I'm going to ask Mr. Davis if there's anything else. Oh, no, Mr. Darby is...
I guess Mr. Pryor is drawing me into this. I really didn't want to say anything at all, but I just, again, I just try to be fair in everything possible. These developers, they're going into these poor areas, and as Mr. Pryor said, the houses are so close that if one were to catch a fire, it's going to be a chain reaction. But when you go to the well-to-do areas, where the empty lots, there are no developers asking to go there to build duplexes and those type of homes, and there's always the dollars on the back of the poor. I can't imagine those type of houses, Union Heights, Acabey, at Westcott, Cedar Grove, I can never imagine that, because that's not allowed, it's not tolerable. But just the idea that we have poor people are being used in terms of housing, and call it affordable, I think it needs to be a distinction at times, because affordable housing and low-income housing, the terms are not synonymous. There's a great difference between the two. So you're putting affordable housing in these poor, particularly the African-American community, and then it's at $465,000. Then the taxes are going to go up, and then the poor are going to be outtasked. And it just reminds me of, I'm not a Marxist or socialist, but it reminds me of Karl Marx and his dialectic process, in terms of the rich get richer and the poor get poor. Well, the rich get richer and fewer, and the poor get poorer and many, and that's what's happening, particularly in these poor areas. I'd also like to go on record by saying, African-Americans, black folk, need to stop blaming white people of gentrification. We need to stop that fabrication, because it's not true. In the past 25, 30, 40 years, when African-Americans were in the majority in the city of Charleston, in the city of North Charleston, gentrification came and existed, because African-American leaders went along with the leadership to allow gentrification. So I don't get sick and tired of blaming white people for gentrification, wherein the majority on these councils are African-Americans, and it just sickens me the way I see some of these poor communities are zoned.
Mr. Boykin, I'm...
I'll be real brief.
I'm not going to stop anyone if they want to comment, but...
No, I mean, since we were talking about the houses in proximity, I don't know if it would work here, or if it's feasible to do so, but when I spent some quality time on a violent crime task force in Philadelphia, they have row houses that run down the whole block, and I don't know if that's a solution for affordability or not, but that was one of the few places I think I've ever seen such a thing, it made it real hard to figure which back door went to which front door. But anyway, but there's yet another something that might be in the inventory.
There's a lot to unpack there, Mr. Boykin, maybe we can, you know, there's some policy discussions that I think, you know, we've been having for at least five years now, that go to both the comments from Mr. Darby and Mr. Boykin, that maybe we can revisit, probably not today, but Mr. Kibrowski, I'll...
Row houses, you know, being from Pennsylvania, where I grew up, that's what the, but that was only part of the story, because where they had row houses, that was places where poor people lived, and they were, they planted, the city planted trees in front of them, like in the small towns, and in industrial towns, and they had alleys behind the house, so they made it, and they had parks nearby and grade school, so it was part of a way for people, maybe who, you know, who were immigrants, who came the first generation, and it was like paradise for us, coming from wherever we came from, immigrants from Eastern or Southern Europe, and it made a community. But it wasn't just the homes, and I know my great-grandma built hundreds of those, but it was a part of a whole, where the town took a part of the process and made it livable for people, by what they did in addition to the homes, so it wasn't in isolation, so thank you for pointing that out.
All wonderful thoughts, and understood, and, you know, I think, I would encourage folks to, if you haven't recently, it's always good to revisit the Housing Our Future Plan, which touches on these and many other policy debates about how we can get a diversified, affordable, and quality place to live for everyone in our county. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. With that, I'm going to turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we are ready for our Administrative Policy and Rules Committee, Mr. Pryor is the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this meeting should go. All right, very quick. Mr. Darby, Mrs. Honeycutt, and Mr. Sasse are members of this committee, along with myself and the chairman, the ex-officio. Item number one, approval of minutes.
Second.
Moving second, any additional deletions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Item number two, here we discuss this, requirements...
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Administration Policy and Rules Committee agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor. We now move into our Finance Committee meeting, item number one.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. The ayes have it, consent agenda.
Two D.
All right.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying...
Chairman, can I have a discussion on two A?
All right.
This has to do, again, with bonuses for employees, and I noticed that it's coming from the budget of the library, that it's $650,000. What did we give the library the $650,000 that they don't need it for now? Is there, or is there a reason we gave it in the first place that we no longer need it? Thank you.
Sir, it comes from our fund balance, it does not affect our operations in any way, shape, or form.
Why was it requested?
Why was it requested? So that we may be in alignment with what the county is doing with the rest of their employees, with the bonuses.
This had been approved, ready for the budget, so was it from the origin that they were going to use this?
No, because of our structure, because we answer to the library board, we have to move to approve a budget amendment with the library board, and then we have to ask for the approval of council to have the budget amendment, after the board has approved it, which they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. The ayes have it, item three, boards and...
Yes, Mrs. Salisbury, how many of these boards only require us to have a vote, I mean...
Only the last one, item G.
Prove, approve of A through F.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. The ayes have it, three G, disabilities and special needs board, we can start with roll call, call the names...
Is there anybody here who wants to speak?
Let them call the names of individuals that they wish to nominate, and if any of the nominees are present, we will ask them to speak, and then we'll vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Miss Honeycutt?
I would like to nominate Ms. Woodflowers, Ms. Kason, Ms. Hoops, and Ms. Kenyon.
Woodflowers, well, so we're not seconding it, we're just getting the names, right? Woodflowers, Kason, Hoops.
Kenyon.
Can you say that last name again?
K-I-N-Y-O-N, Kenyon.
K-I-N-Y-O-N, all right. Mr. Werman, do you have any different names you wish to add to that list?
I did not.
Okay, Mr. Pryor, do you have any different names? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Moody, any different...
I would just put them all in nomination, let's call the roll and vote.
I would second, Mr. Moody. Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. The ayes have it. Good evening.
No, 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 no.
Persons, persons who are here.
No, 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 Mr. Middleton, I was, I was saying, I think we should put all five applicants in nomination.
And I seconded. I thought you were nominating the slate as she presented them.
No, 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 sir, no, sir, I was saying, I was saying, I was recommending that we nom, we just put all five members that applied, and then let each member, let Mrs. Salisbury call each member, and that member can nominate up to four members, then she can count everybody up.
Thank you so much, I am with you now. All right, Mrs. Salisbury, call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Boykin?
And I apologize if I mispronounced this, Agalas, Kason, Hoops, and Woodflowers.
Mr. Darby?
Kason.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Woodflowers, Kason, Hoops, and Kenyon.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Woodflowers, Kenyon, Hoops, and Kason, did I have that right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody?
Agalas, Kason, Hoops, Woodflowers.
Mr. Pryor?
Kason, Flowers, Kenyon, and Hoops.
Mr. Sasse?
Woodflowers, Kason, and Agalar.
Okay. Mr. Werman?
Woodflowers, Kason, Hoops, Kenyon.
Chairman Middleton?
Woodflowers, Kason, Hoops, Kenyon.
So those are the nominees, Kason, Kenyon, Hoops, and Woodflowers.
All right, if any of those persons, all those in, oh, we've already voted. Any of those persons, if you're here, let's go with Ms. Woodflowers, if you're here. Okay, Ms. Kason, yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. I appreciate your support. I have been serving on the Disabilities and Special Needs Board of Charleston County for two years, when I filled a vacancy, and during that time, I've attended the meetings, I have participated in fundraisers, job fairs, gone to Trident Tech, trying to build networking within the community to increase the workforce for direct support professionals who work in the residential homes and the day programs, as well as develop more opportunities for retention of said individuals who take care of our most vulnerable citizens in the community. So I appreciate your support, and I ask for an additional appointment for four years, so I can continue to work with this wonderful board, under the direction of Evelyn Turner, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Ms. Hoops? Ms. Kenyon? All right. Anyone else who was nominated, but may not have made the cut? All right.
I honestly thought it was, I didn't realize the first group was going to go over twice the wall.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.